I did hit my button.
Yours aren't turning on?
Which button?
Second button.
It works now.
No, those are still flashing.
Mine works.
Now, if only you would talk into it instead of leaning back. Oh, it's not flashing anymore.
There you go.
Now you need to. Done. There we go. What was that? Is that better? We technologically suck. That's what Junior was for.
Okay. Thank everyone for coming this evening and let's join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, and its rightful liberty and justice for all.
It done.
Um, he was gonna call in. Again, I want to thank you all for coming to the meeting this evening. Um, we're getting started here. I'd appreciate if you all put your phones either shut them off or put them on mute. And I would like to ask Patty to call roll.
Ryan. Dan.
Here.
Don. Wanda, here. John.
Here. We do have a quorum. Are there any conflicts of interest this evening? Here's Don.
I have none.
Hi, Don, you're here.
Here.
Are you enjoying the sunshine down in, down in, uh, Mexico?
Been extremely nice.
Okay.
Yeah, it's much warmer than it is up there.
Well, we, we gained, uh, it was eleven, eleven below this morning when I went to work and it was twenty-five, it was twenty-five when I came here. So it's, it was a heat wave.
I do.
Okay.
I do not.
Any conflicts of interest? Wanda has none.
None.
Dan has none. I have none.
About Kettering.
Don has not been sworn in yet, so he's just here as a guest. Now's the time for public comment. Actually, I need to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Yeah, Wanda, approve, uh, motion to make the agenda. Dan, second. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye. Now's the time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Now is the time for public comment. Yes, I have, I have Bob like like to step up to the microphone and welcome, Bob. Push the button.
My name is Bob Gleick. I'm a resident of Yankton County. Uh, on your agenda for tonight is the sheriff's office is talking about adding on the the jail for juveniles. I want to bring up a concept where people think on Yankton County is short on space right now. You've got sheriff's office wants a new juvenile jail. The ambulance service wants a new location for their operation and all that stuff. And I'm not going to count the little offices that are out there at the ambulance area out there where people are spread around. My concept is if we're going to spend money, let's talk to the city of Yankton about buying City Hall. They've made statements in the past that it's obsolete for their use, old, whatever. Let's, let's take it back to get our money back out of this deal because which part of these, uh, operations that we need space for could fit in that City Hall? The sheriff's office could make a bigger facility over there for not just juveniles, but also for some adults if he needs more space. So let's think to the future as we're talking about spending money to expand. City Hall wants to turn around and get out of there. They want to build a new library. Maybe we could help them facilitate two problems that are actually problems, two ideas that they have to get done. Let's be proactive. Let's look down the road. It doesn't hurt to talk to people. The worst you get is a no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening. I'm Will Kennedy with Pathways Homeless Shelter here in Yankton. I've got Alexis Evans. She is our operations director. We handed out our impact report from 2024. And as most of you saw, we are also making some big changes. We released a press release Friday. We're doing some big changes to our programming. I'm going to get on the agenda for next time, but we wanted to stop in and kind of highlight our impacts from last year and then take any immediate questions you had about the press release. So I'll let Alexis talk about our, our big impacts from 2024.
Hi guys. Um, just wanted to really touch on our employment rate across all of our programs. It makes, um, great.
Excuse me, Alexis, can you state your name and, and?
Oh, Alexis Evans, operations director. Um, with Pathway Shelter for the homeless. Just wanted to highlight our, um, employment rate across all of our programs. As we know, rate of employment um, increases rate of success in our programs with finding housing because you need income in order to pay for a rental and utilities and all of that. And wanted to highlight the hours of case management put in by our staff, getting people access to resources, um, getting them on Medicaid, SNAP benefits and everything else to better their chances of success in the community.
So we don't need to read all this to you. You have it in hand. And for the public, we're going to make this available on our Pathways Homeless Shelter website, or you can give us a call. Our number's on the website. Like I said, we don't want to take everybody's time up tonight. But if you do have any questions about the program changes, we can sure answer them now. Or if you want to visit individually, we just wanted to make sure that you knew where to find us and that we will be glad to talk about them.
Oh, well, one, one thing I, uh, had a question about, is this something that's going to happen like statewide?
I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
I'm talking into the microphone. Uh, or is this just happening in Yankton? Are you, are you aware of this? Something the state?
We're a standalone entity that gets funding from the state. This is what we have found is going to need to happen to keep pathways sustainable. Um, money's just tight. Like you guys are looking at some cuts. Welcome to 2025. So here we go. And when you read through the report, you will see where we really make a difference. Our reentry program, we can keep parolees onboard for two weeks to start working the program. They end up being eighty percent employed. And that's as felons. We're, we're very proud of that number.
Have you signed any binding agreements with the state yet, or is it going to be? Is that going to be in the future? Do we know? And the, the reason I ask is, uh, if possible, I think it would be a good idea if we work with maybe the state's attorney and the sheriff. We just looked at ways, uh, we can make this, you know, better. Um, possibly, you know, even, even, uh, having the state add maybe a, a parole office or something to make it easier for those people. And what, what we want to do is make it work for our community. And, and I know we got a lot of experience with Tyler and the sheriff here and, uh, I guess offer our assistance to you too. And maybe think about things that haven't crossed your mind yet and we can get your perspective too.
Sure. Yeah, we do have a contract with the state currently that goes into June of 2025. Um, and then we'll start, um, negotiations for our next round of contract in June.
We'd certainly like to back from all our stakeholders before we, we do that. And again, it's not a new program. It's an extension of a very successful, very much needed program. Our rate of housing, someone on parole is less than fifty percent of that for the state of South Dakota. So it's, it's taxpayer savings.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And we'll, uh, look forward to meeting with you on the agenda. Okay, moving on. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Mike, you are up on the highway with the Rafe advertising annual bids and, uh, resolution to delete some bridge information.
Yep. Um, first we'll do the, the rave. Is there any questions on the rave program? We had four different townships.
Are we using any other refunding for unorganized townships?
Uh, if you looked at the, through the packet there, there's one for central that's unorganized. So.
Okay, good deal. Okay. No, I think this is a good program. And, uh, when it, when do we have to use this up by?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
But there, it's in legislation again to see what.
To extend it, possibly extend it.
I don't know if I would bank on that this year, but, uh, you know, a good program, um, I think it's done a lot of good for the county and the state.
I had all the figures back at the office, but I, it was like four hundred and some thousand have been allocated.
Yeah.
Um, overall, um, after this year, after, if you, if you guys approve all, all of these, we'll still end up with like a hundred and thirty thousand left.
Okay.
And, and I think, I think this is just a call out to the townships that, that, you know, if, if this is going to end in 2029, I would assume that our townships should meet with Mike and Mike has, has pushed, been pushing in the last several years to, to get them involved in this program because this is a, a funded program that they can get their structures replaced at a, at a very reasonable rate. And if, if the legislature decides to not extend it past twenty-nine, it's going to run, run out. And if you've got structures out there that you want to have replaced, uh, too bad. So sad.
Right.
So.
Your feedback from the townships is.
The townships that are utilizing, utilizing this, uh, are grateful for it. Um, like the one, the one, uh, structure that Walsh Towns applying for, um, yeah, they, they could not afford that without this program.
But, but it's same token, obviously. Obviously, there's, uh.
Something going on there.
He'll probably need to mute on his end.
Yes. Obviously, there there's, there's townships out there though, that are not taking advantage of this program.
There are some that are ineligible and have chosen not to meet the requirements.
Right.
Yeah. And, and honestly, that, that is at the state because we discussed it. That hurts the chances of this getting more approval at the state level because there are quite a number statewide of townships that haven't met the criteria and haven't moved toward doing that. So I'd move approval of the, uh, rural access infrastructure funds, awards.
Yeah.
No, we can go.
So I have a, that emotion.
Motion, yes.
I was dealing with Don here. So I got a motion by Dan, second by Wanda to approve these rave, rave applications, um, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion, uh, opposed nay.
That's too bad.
Motion carries.
I know. I think I hung up on you.
Uh, you.
Next is, uh, just need, uh, let you guys know that I'm going to go off her bids for annual, our annual projects.
So moved to approve, uh, it's.
They're having technological difficulties. Sorry, Dan. I hung, Don, I hung up on you. Asking him to mute himself.
Can you mute your phone, Don, until, uh, you need to speak? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Motion to, uh, advertise for annual bids.
Got a motion by Dan to advertise, second by Wanda, all in favor, aye.
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 Oppose same sign. Motion, motion carries.
Next is, uh, resolution to delete, uh, bridge from the NBI, um, bridge number six eight, two oh two dash one thirty. Um, that's a bridge over, uh, four, four, eight and three oh or about a half mile east of four, four, eight. Last year, we, uh, it was a bridge connected to a concrete box. We made that disappear and we put, uh, three six-foot culverts in.
I'd move to remove bridge six eight two zero two hyphen one three zero from the bridge.
Second. Motion by Wanda, second by Dan to remove the bridge six eight, two oh two, one three zero. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed nay. Motion carries.
Last, uh, bridge inspection program resolution. Um, this is for use with the DOT. Um, every year we have to do this for, uh, bridge inspections. We have to select an engineering firm off the list. Um, I recommend we continue on with IMEG.
And Mike, this is, we, we do all bridges every.
Every two years and then Jim Rivers every year. And then plus whatever, like this year, we're going to do them four bridges. So there'll be them Jim River Bridges plus them four will get inspected.
And, you know, just a little bit of history. I know what we decided to do, the James River Bridges annually, and it was actually quite controversial, barely passed. Then 2019 hit and we had all those big, huge storms and we had a $250,000 damage to Jamesville Bridge with the state wasn't going to pay for. But luckily we had just done an inspection and were able to prove it. So, I mean, well, I think they're well worth it. They identify problems early when they're more affordable to fix rather than going years and years. And then all of a sudden, like we had with Johnson Bridge and all those bridges where they had to be shut down for months and months. So, uh, great program and I'd move approval of it.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Wanda to approve the, the bridge inspection resolution. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for everything.
Particularly the snow removal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's working really well this year.
You know, I did.
Did you just jinx us? If it snows in two weeks.
I got a picture this morning from my friends down in Louisiana where they have seven inches of snow on the ground. I sent them a picture of us with no snow. So.
Yeah.
Pensacola.
Keep diverting it.
Two inches of snow this morning.
Yeah.
See you, Mike.
Okay, next item, 2024 fourth quarter annual report for, uh, Eric, ambulance.
Good evening. Fortunately, I will not be taking a whole lot of your time this evening either. So, um, so fourth quarter wrap up, we ended up with twenty-two hundred and sixty-four calls for service last year. We were down forty-five from the previous year, but as I've explained, there were some things that we worked on to mitigate some of those unnecessary calls, which have been in our favor. Um, we had fourteen hundred and forty-three transports in 2024, which was actually up from the previous year. So it's just equalling a better utilization of service rendered for the, uh, citizens of Yankton County. The past year, we actually received two grants from the South Dakota Department of Health, um, equalling $21,139.55. Uh, was a two-part component. Um, one was for some education equipment. We were able to get a mannequin to uh, educate all of our first responders within the county. And then the other one is a hand heavy patient care system, which should help mitigate any medication errors. And if any of you have done your due diligence on medication errors, we want to try to prevent them. Um, especially with some of the news that's coming out of North Sioux City this morning, um, this week. So.
Um, what came out of North Sioux City this week?
Familiar with that.
There's an article out there saying that the wrong medication was drawn up by the paramedic and the patient initially died two days later. Um, I don't know all the details about it. It's an unfortunate event. Um, if you really dig into it, and this is something that I talk to people about, the third leading cause of death in the United States are medical errors. We just don't, aren't real open and boisterous about that because we want people to feel comfortable when they're seeking medical attention. But us trying to mitigate as many human errors because we're all human and we make errors, trying to mitigate those as much as we can is going to make a better practice and keep our patients safer. So. Um, just give you an update, uh, because I really haven't done this for some time. Uh, we have two full-time billers, one part-time biller. Uh, Brenda is going to be retiring in 2025. We have seven, as of this morning, seven full-time paramedics. Um, including administration. We have six full-time EMTs and twenty part-time staff. We've actually lost some of our part-time staff over the last year. Um, of those twenty part-time staff, six are part-time paramedics, fourteen are part-time EMTs. Uh, there's currently three individuals enrolled in paramedic school that, uh, to work for us currently, and one happens to work in the sheriff's department. So looking to increase the level of care. Now, the part that you all really care about, um, our 2024 budget. Our 2024 budget was $1,432,267. We utilized 1.41 million, $664.84, which basically means we had remaining $21,602, which means we were under budget. The one thing I didn't confirm with Patty is part of the grant we paid out of our budget and I'm waiting for the check. So that was about $12,000. So it might've been closer to 33,000. We were under budget, but either way, we're under budget. The 2024 billing department, they receiveded 1.124,787,067 cents. So the total cost of service in 2024 was $285,877.7. So the total cost of service in two thousand and twenty four was two hundred and eighty five thousand, eight hundred and seventy seven dollars and seventeen cents. So we got really close to that two hundred thousand I was hoping for. We came up a little shy, but it's still much better than we've ever had. The most we'd ever had, uh, Troy had reported earlier this summer. Eight hundred and four thousand dollars, so we're billing departments doing well. Now, for full transparency, um, I always try to be transparent with you all. I was notified today that with the new program that we went to. Um, being computers and the different features that you can turn on and off. Um, our billing department found out that one of the buttons that they thought did some automatic billing. We still have roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars on self pay insurers that they've not been able to collect on. That's been rectified. And so again, we have the opportunity to even better this and it would have been really nice because we would have been right in that window. But again. It's one of those things that was missed because it's a new system. Um, but I think we're steering in the right direction when it comes to our budget, um, and the expenses there within, so. Other than that, um, I know you guys are. Have a busy full night and that would be all I'd have for you, so.
Any questions for Eric from the mission?
No, I think that's fantastic news.
Give credit where credits do. Did a great job. I didn't think it could be done, but uh, keep up the good work.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Uh, one, one question for you. I know that there's talk at the state about cutting a lot of these programs, Medicaid and all that. Now, that would have the potential to harm the ambulance, correct? I mean, I'm I'm sure you guys rely a lot on Medicaid patients or. And you've done a good job signing with people up in the past, just so citizens around there realize, I mean. We're doing a pretty good job of keeping that cost per service low. We want to keep it there and that would be difficult if uh if Medicaid went away.
Well, there's no doubt about that and we just gotta, we just gotta hope that the state regulates that uh.
You you would hope so.
And 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 our legislators work that bill the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah, yeah.
Needs to be done, so.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Eric. I get a motion, motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Wanda. All in favor to approve the uh ambulance? Fourth quarter report, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries. Preston, you're up.
Be quick on the volume.
Sheriff Chrissy, thank you for having me tonight because we got quite a few things on the agenda. Uh, first thing I want to just cover would probably be the um K nine program. Uh, there's no, no need for uh a motion or anything. This is just kind of for you guys' information. Uh, when I took over the sheriff's office, um, it was my. Um, plan at some point to try to get a K nine program started at the Yankton County Sheriff's Office. Um, currently in the South Dakota, or um, the Attorney General's Office has a drug forfeiture fund. So anybody that's caught in Yankton County or anywhere in the state of South Dakota that's um, is a dealer. Uh, if they have any cash and we're able to uh collect on that, that money actually goes right back to peer. So it doesn't matter if it comes from Pennington County or Fall River County, Yankton County, it all goes back to peer. So there is a drug forfeiture fund available. Um, we did hire a new deputy from Union County. This is Austin Scholar and I'll let him introduce himself here. So uh, when he came on, um, we explored this K nine program, um. And I can't take a lot of the credit because I made, I delegated. And so uh Deputy Scholar did a really good job on this project. Um, we were granted uh seventy one thousand, one hundred and fifty nine dollars and ninety eight cents. Through uh the Attorney General's Office, uh Marty Jackley had sent us a a letter personally, you know, thank us for the hard work. And um, so I think it's a really big thing for Yankton County and uh Tyler will get busier. Uh, as time goes on, but I will uh introduce um Austin here, Deputy Scholar.
I'm Deputy Scholar. Um, as I said, I came from Union County and I, would you guys like me to tell? Personal history or anything like that, or talk about canine?
Let give us a brief discussion on your your canine experience.
Alright, well canine experience is kind of minimal. I have dogs, I have bed dogs, I have a German Shepherd at home. Um, I was over an ancestor for quite a few years, worked my way up to chief there, went to the Union County Sheriff's Office. Throughout my career, been passionate about uh getting narcotics off the street because. Truthfully, ninety percent of the crime comes from, you know. Illicit use of the narcotics or some way, shape or form, they're trying to steal something, these burglaries, it's all. Intermixed, um, canine is a great tool. I've tried to use it for many years. It's kind of unfortunate. It's harder. To get, you know, the help from a canine. Um, there's not many around. That canine is a great tool. To be able to apprehend people, to be able to get into those cars that say I. I can't use case law or any, you know, legal authority to get into that you. Uh, know there's something in there, so I believe this is gonna be a great asset to Yankton County. Um, I'm very passionate about it. We're tired on this grant. Uh, we're tired on even applying for it. He didn't make it easy for me, so um. I think it's gonna be great for Yankton County in itself.
Doesn't the Highway Patrol have a dog?
Highway Patrol has numerous dogs.
I mean, in this area.
In this area, we got two that are more of the dedicated uh narcotics canines, uh, the. We got north and east, the issue with that, you know, we can call them and ask. I've been able to utilize one here. At at one time, um, but they also run in Bon Home County, they run in Union County. Sioux Falls, they go up to I ninety a lot. Um, with that, there is a new case law that came out relatively recently. Uh, it's called the Rodriguez case, I believe, um, where reasonable suspicion. Is needed to be able to hold that person for any longer or extend that stop any longer for a dog. Um, so that timeframe needs to be reasonable. Um, and with a canine being up in the I ninety corridor, you know, coming down here forty five, fifty minutes. Uh, that reasonableness deteriorate deteriorates over the longer that you have.
Doesn't Yankton, the city of Yankton have a drug dog?
They do.
And we rather than use the Highway Patrol dog, call, use the city of Yankton dog?
Yeah, you can, you can use the city, city's dog as well. Dogs aren't available all the time, like I said. Uh, I believe the one right here now has been offline for a month, um, due to military reasons, so.
The dog or the handler?
The the handler, which makes the dog, obviously.
Okay, just checking.
Yep.
Uh, do you know exactly what kind of drugs you're gonna be training the dog on? Because I know a little bit what I've read is when. Marijuana laws, for example, change, the dog doesn't know. If it's legal or not, they just know that there's a drug I've been trained on here, so.
We've, we've shortly talked about it. Um, I'm not sure if we're gonna get into the marijuana. We can obviously select which ones which are gonna be your.
I say solving the meth problem and then we'll go down from there.
Yep, so we haven't fully decided on that, but there's that and fentanyl which are more optional and we haven't truly decided it down.
I'd say can't get rid of those and then we can figure it out after that. Thank you, appreciate it.
I will say that we're gonna consultate with our state's attorney's office and see how many charges he wants to provide here.
Yeah. He's got a lot of extra time, I think.
Yeah, yeah, nothing else going on, so. I wanted uh Deputy Scholar to come in and uh it's a big deal and seventy one thousand dollars and when I, I made him work for that grant. Uh, it pays for everything for the dog, so.
When do we plan?
To get it and uh train it and then what?
Everything for the dog.
Forever?
What's that?
Forever?
Yeah, for the, then we'll do some fundraising to take care of the dog if.
Like food and stuff going forward.
Yep, yep.
When, when we get the dog, I'd like you to bring it in and we'll uh introduce it.
We'll have a petting session and.
Probably not pet.
Yeah.
Like, do what they did at the high school, put like. Or the Lincoln School and put a drug somewhere, see if the dog can find it.
Yeah, that'd be a good thing. It'll be a dual purpose dog too, so it'll, it'll be for tracking too, because. We have people who like to flee cars and then they run into a cornfield.
And then hide in the beans.
And then they, well, and they lay down on the beans. Yeah. So anyways, I just wanted to bring that up. I thought it was a really good thing.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Austin.
Yep.
For all your hard work.
Yeah, thank you. You were relieved if you want to. Alright, thank you. Alright, one down. What else we got here? Let's go with uh, okay, purchase of a van. So last year I came before you guys to buy a new transport van. Uh, it was on the state bid. Uh, we, as soon as you guys approved that back in February of last year. Um, I placed the order with Lewis and Clark Ford. And uh, they finally fulfilled the order. It's not on them. It's just, I think they had some strikes in Michigan. Uh, with the union workers and so that van has finally come in. If you look at my uh budget proposal for two thousand and twenty five, I was budgeting for another van anyways. So what I did is I purchased a van uh in two thousand and twenty four, had thirteen thousand miles on it. And then this one will just be a carryover, so there's enough in the budget line because I budgeted for another van anyways.
So it's already in there.
Yep, and so I'm just coming to you guys since it's a new fiscal year for the county, just to approve the fifty seven thousand. Three hundred and eighty seven dollars to Lewis and Clark Ford, just since it's a new fiscal year.
So moved.
Okay.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda to approve the purchase of the new van. Um, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Motion carries.
Sure, could you maybe just briefly tell the public, you know. This is used primarily for transport and all the miles you're putting on, you know, you're running inmates all over the state. And and we gotta have a good functioning vehicle to do the, what inmates and probably juveniles and and all of that that we transport.
Yeah, so the uh last year, uh, our, our biggest van that we have is a nine passenger. And that had like a hu, it's got like almost close to a hundred and ninety thousand miles on it. I personally drove it with Captain Drake one night because we had a bunch of committals. You know, we were short people and uh the air conditioner didn't work and it was one of the hottest days of the summer. But it got fixed and uh, but it's time for it to to move on.
A hundred and ninety thousand, we got our money's worth of.
So, so do we need to uh make that van excess equipment and get rid of it? Or the, the one, the nine passenger or?
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll, we'll strip it out and then we'll surplus, we'll put on a surplus to be sold and I'll let Patty know because I.
Yeah, and I, I talked to some of the transporters and that was a, what, a two wheel drive van and they. Get sometimes caught in a blizzard and I think this other one's what, all wheel drive or four wheel?
Yeah, the one for twenty twenty five will be all wheel, yeah.
And that, you know, is a big deal if you're running somebody to go commit them in Sioux Falls and you're coming back in a blizzard. I, I think it's a good thing to do for safety for the inmates and.
When you say commit them.
Or. Put them in.
You mean taking them to the prison or?
Oh, we use the, we use the vehicles for all sorts of stuff, either marshal runs, um, taking people to prisons. Um, juveniles.
But not commitments.
Uh, no, we've had to do commitments, uh, so committals. Because the sheriff's office is responsible for all transportation to, um, so if somebody goes to a Vera up in Sioux Falls. Um, when Lucy puts a mental health hold on, and we have to, we're responsible for transport.
Why aren't they going out at HLC?
Uh, they're either full or the state contracts with the Vera and uh, we had, I think. We had three people that one night and so we wanted to have more than one officer and we were short and so. Um, air conditioner could have worked a little better, in my opinion. But yeah, so the uh, if you've paid attention to yesterday's inauguration, we anticipate that we're gonna be busy. Um, so we will have two vans.
And we have ICE contract, is that, or, or where are we at?
So I renegotiated the marshal one and I believe, and I got contact ICE that we're gonna be falling under the same. Uh, negotiations. Um, we cannot house ICE more than seventy two hours in our facility, so it's gonna be a lot of in and out moving and uh. So we're just anticipating that.
So what happens if they build that new prison up in Lincoln County? How is that gonna impact marshal holds and?
I don't, I think that um, Yankton County's in a pretty good position. And um, it's just like Minnehaw County with the juvenile detention. I mean, they're in a pretty good position because they're charging us five hundred bucks a night. So I think that regardless to the South Dakota State Penitentiary being built somewhere. I think that they're already gonna be max, maxed out, kind of like with Clay County. Now, they're, they're gonna have a forty four bed jail. Uh, they're gonna be. Barely busy, I I would say for forty four beds, so. We're in a pretty good position in my opinion.
Patty, our jail has paid off this year, is that correct?
Yes.
Do we know the date of when it's gonna be paid off, the last payment?
Paid off at, at the end of the year. I make the payment like in December, November, and then November, December.
I think we should have some, plan on some, at least some sort of celebration for that. That's, that's a big deal. That's a big deal having it paid off.
We talked about, we, we, I talked about uh, doing a mortgage burning deal on the, on the front steps of the.
Yeah. Well, but, but it's, it's a, a sacrifice that our community made, what, twenty years ago? To overbuild the jail, build it bigger than what we needed at the time and uh, without state help and.
Apparently, we didn't factor in fentanyl and methamphetamine.
No, but I, I, I do think that that's a, that should be a.
It should be a celebration.
Yeah, if it's as cold as today, we will push, we'll postpone that, I think.
Or, or can we send the check a little early?
Yeah, I want you to do, yeah, pay it off in July.
We could, we could, uh, what, just postdate the check in the future and we're just.
Yeah.
Um, so the other thing I was gonna bring up, you guys voted on the van, so the third thing is gonna be the uh.
Juvenile study.
No, we'll do the uh, let's just do the uh, report for the sheriff and jail. So, any questions in regards to that? I think we were just under, I think for marshal holds. Which I think you guys are probably most interested in, we um, took in about nine hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars, so we were under. A million, but I, I anticipate this next year we will be the, you know. Over that. And staffing has been better. I think we're one, maybe two short right now in the jail, so.
Yeah.
But if you guys have any questions about the quarterly jail report, I'd be more than happy to.
No, and, and as, at least thus far, the state has agreed to pay medical bills for parolees. For this year at least, that's what we're hearing, correct?
I don't, I don't believe the medical part. I think we're still.
Still in the.
Yeah, I think we're still gonna get the ninety five dollars a day. Um, and I gotta get some clarity because I have a meeting with the DOC coming up. So uh, I will get back to you for sure with the hash that stuff out, but.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve the sheriff quarterly report.
A motion by Dan, second, second by Wanda to approve the quarterly, the sheriff's quarterly report. Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay, motion carries.
Alright, lastly, um, so obviously the juvenile detention center has been a discussion and so, um. Just like our forefathers did, you know, they planned this jail, the jail will be paid off at the end of December. Um, I'm not necessarily saying we have to build anything or do an addition. I'm open to any um. Suggestions, yeah, I mean, along the way, I'm just trying to find a way that would make it easier. Um, and more feasible for Yankton County residents, um, so we're not spending. The monopoly money up to Minnehaw County and so, um, I brought, so Dick Shrosberg and Tyler, I want you guys to come on up. And uh. I know they came last, last time. Uh, I was down in Texas with my son, so I was white knuckle driving through the uh, snowstorm, but. So the packet was sent out to you guys. I don't know if you guys got a chance to look at it or not, um. Obviously, there's gonna be a feasibility study that we would like to take a look at for Yankton County to see if it's even feasible for us. Um, at the end of the study, if it's.
How much is a study?
Twenty five thousand. Which we came under budget last year in two thousand and twenty four for juvenile holds. Um, I do believe that the judges have been very nice to Yankton County and we're not housing as many we probably should be. Um, if we had something here, I think there'd be a lot more accountability for some of the juveniles and it could help with. Them repeating as offenders.
Sure, there's one clarification on the fee. Taggart's fee is twenty five thousand, then we will go off for proposals. We'll go out to proposals. We'll go out to proposals for, uh, for an architect and for a contractor to assist. Now, knowing.
Will that be in the study?
Uh.
Or is that in addition?
That's in addition, yeah. And it's hard to forecast exactly what that is, but, and the reason for that is, the way we like to do it is, I think we mentioned before, we like to, uh, send a request for proposal for the whole thing. If it goes through, you, they've got a contract, we're just tiring for a little bit of that front end work. Because that's what we need upfront, just to get this feasibility study understood. And oftentimes, they view that as marketing because it's, they do that little bit of work upfront, it's what we need. Like pricing up this, uh, for a contractor to price it up, knowing that if it passes, they will, uh, you know, be paid down the road. Uh, but, you know, they oftentimes will charge something, maybe five thousand dollars. They'll, they'll charge something upfront on it. But the goal is, we don't need that much information here. What we need is, we just wanna give it so when we come back and we look at whatever this solution is, if it's expanding or if it's looking at another building that, you know, the city or whatever has, we just wanna make sure we're giving you good information. And the mistake, uh, many counties and cities make is they go in and they, they, they do just kinda scratch the surface on this front end. Uh, when it comes to the dollars on it, then they approve something, then they find out what it really costs and they can't do it for what that is. So we've got a hundred percent track record. Now, if we give a price on it and this is what it's gonna cost, that, that's what we can actually build it for. And that, that's important because you're making decisions on this. You're, and we gotta give you information that's reliable. And the way we do that is get the, uh, you know, contractors that know how to build these, get them engaged and get them to do a full estimate on it, so we know what it is.
Well, I think the thing that's holding us back, at least at this point, is we don't own the land upon which the site is. The proposed building wants to be built.
Right.
And I don't know how far that's gone.
So, so I did actually talk to Tyler and to Rob yesterday, actually. And because we have a ninety-nine year lease on that property, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tyler.
What year are we in?
We're, we're gonna be in twenty. So we got seventy-nine years left. And correct me if I'm wrong, the, the lease does not give the city an opportunity to say, hey, your, your building is paid for. We want, we want, we want to build a new facility for the city, so you need to take your building off of there. And, and that's what we kinda discussed yesterday and the lease does not allow them to do that. So my understanding is, is we, we actually have the lease good for another seventy-nine years. So therefore, it's probably not as big of an issue, but that was my concern is that the city could do that to us. And that's why I, I really was pushing for them to, to sell us the property underneath of that facility. And I'm actually gonna have another meeting, uh, the sixth of February or fifth of February with the city to discuss that. But I'm not quite as concerned at this point in time about that.
Why would we buy it if we have it for seventy-nine more years?
I, I just, that was a comfort zone that I wanted to be in. But like I say, if, if we're, if, if our state's attorney's office is saying that there's absolutely no way that they can kick us off, then I'm good with that.
Uh, how much will the new propose, and I know you can't give me a real good answer because it's all pie in the sky at this point. But how much of that back part would this proposed structure take?
Well, and like I said, uh, I'm not an architect or anything. So we were just kinda saying, what would be, what would make sense for us not to lose a lot of parking over there? So we do have, uh, our transport vans are parked alongside the, the gym area. And so that would be lost. The current proposed parking that we have over there, if you've been over in the lot, it'd be just four. Yeah, so four parking spots for our transporters. Which, um, and we started the, the deputy sheriff car take-home program, so that eased up on our parking lot. Um, so that way, we're, we're not taking up a lot of parking for people who have to be on time for court. As far as the question.
I think they should have court on holidays because I drove up to the courthouse yesterday.
Nobody there.
And, and I got pulled right up in the front spot. I felt like Bob Uker.
But you know, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursdays are the bad days to be there.
That's okay.
Uh, question for you then, and I assume you've done quite a number of these facilities. And i- is there a, you know, like a break even number that you like to see? Because there, I mean, if you're gonna build, you're gonna build this facility ultimately to save tax dollars, right? But there's a line where, you know, if you have this many kids, uh, it's worth it. But if you're under this amount, well, it's probably not. And do you have any idea?
Well, I think, I think fair to say that's what we'll come up with. We'll, we'll have to figure that out because, you know, we can honestly tell you at this point, you know, you'll spend this money upfront here that's, you know, twenty-five with us and then additional for the architect. And it depends how busy they are too, because that could be another twenty-five. And if there's some dollars involved, but we get competitive proposals, you know, obviously push it down upfront. And, um, and one of the things that we come up with on this is, you know, working, we've got the construction side. We'll come up with the construction costs for you. That's, that's only part of the equation. It's a, you know, what's the offset on staffing and what does it cost you to transport them up to Minnehaha? And what, what's the big picture on this thing, what your real cost is? And we don't know what the answer on that is because it's, uh, it's a, you know.
Yeah.
Probably jump in a little bit.
And I would say that, um, the reason why we're, we're looking at a co-located building is because if we were to build off-site and have our own separate structure for juvenile detention, to me, that would not be feasible. But last year, we spent just under, just about three hundred thousand dollars on juvenile holds. And we just got a letter saying it was gonna go up more, um, up in Sioux Falls. So that's, that's the reason why the co-located, um, section would make more sense for Yankton County versus a separate building. Um, and then also, um, and John and I have discussed this, but if you're gonna do a, a co-located addition to the jail for juveniles, um, you could, I always forget about you.
That's why I'm hiding back here. This is my.
Yeah.
I've been here the longest, so I can hide back here.
So, um, but with the addition of a juvenile detention, we would strategically think long-term for Yankton County is that our general crimes has not gone down. And, um, we would be able to maybe expand into our APod so we could house more adults too on top of it with the juvenile section. Um, because it's gotta be no sight and no sound with juveniles, so. You know, it wouldn't make sense for us just to build a little juvenile and then not, when you already got construction crew ready to roll, just maybe think even further to the future, but tha- that's why we don't do a separate co- or a, a separate building of a juvenile detention center.
Which is logical.
What's that?
Which is logical.
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to do. It's think more logically.
Yeah.
But three hundred thousand dollars last year.
How much is our payment?
This year, it's, um, not quite three hundred thousand because it's the last payment.
How much was it last year then?
Uh, six, I think six hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah. It's a lot of juveniles.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's something that I like to see. If we're gonna move forward with the study, we're gonna have to justify it to the citizens and the taxpayers that, hey, you know, if we go this way, it's actually a cost savings and, and maybe we'll find that out, maybe we won't, but, you know, it could be a, I mean, it likely have to be a bond or an opt-out or something.
Of course.
What, what would you say that Patty would be bond or what, if we ended up going that route? What?
Um.
May- maybe a lot of marshal holds or shit. I don't even know what it is, but.
That's what we have, we have now. It's a bond for the.
Right. Yeah.
And it's probably the same.
And, and so that's where we're gonna have to be, i- is if we're gonna do a bond, it's either gonna be approved or, or, or it'll go up to a vote. And so we're gonna have, if we decide that, I'm saying if, we're gonna have to prove to the taxpayers that, yes, this is worth it.
And, and I, and I've had a lot of constituents, uh, I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what would be a lot, but within the last thirty days, I've had twenty people come up to me and say that it is worth us to look into and moving forward with the juvenile detention center house here in Yankton County, just for the fact of, of the, the, the funding should be available because our jail is now paid, gonna be paid for. And, and I think that, uh, the public will agree, uh, go along with another bond. So a- and because we, we need to keep our juveniles, if we're, if, if they're committing the crimes here, we need to figure out why they're committing the crimes here. And we need to keep them here and, and house them here so that they, they, they learn their lesson. Hopefully, they learn their lesson. And.
I, I agree.
We go down the road from there.
And hopefully they become productive members of society, learn their lesson and then get on the right track.
Yes, and you, you send them to Sioux Falls, you send them to Sioux Falls and they're just meeting someone from Pipestone, Minnesota then, that, that is, uh, uh, who knows what they're doing. And they get to texting back and forth and they haven't learned their lesson and, and they get out of there and they, hey, let's go do something in Parker or whatever. It, it's, it, it's, it's just a situation where, where if we have them here, hopefully our, our people can train them and the school system here is gonna be available to them. They're gonna be able to come right back into their same school, educational system, where they're going up there and who knows what.
Depends.
I'm not saying that.
Depends on what their crime is. They might be having to go to the alternative school or.
Yeah.
Buy computer only.
But, but they're go to up, and I'm not saying Minnehaha County is not a good educational system. It's just that it's different than what's being taught here in Yankton.
We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be derailing the, the kids if they're currently going to Yankton School District or the Gayville School District. You know, um, in today's day and age, like, it's a lot easier for a student to follow, uh, do online schooling. Uh, there's a lot of kids that do online schooling now that aren't in trouble.
Yeah.
But so that would just be another, and then another added thing would be like for juvenile detention alternative initiative with, uh, the state's attorney's office. Alec Martin would be able to work with these kids because I know that there's been some issues with, um, you know, the, the Boys and Girls Club being on school property, so it kinda limits his, his job to, to meet with these kids. Um, and then also I've had discussions with, uh, the chief of police, you know, on what are better ways that we can serve the community? Because Yankton's in Yankton County and so they may deal with the juveniles, but we have to do something with the juveniles regardless to, uh, if they make an arrest here. You know, I, I've explained, you could have a crime, uh, student from Gayville come to Yankton, commit a crime. Yankton County still has to deal, you know, do something with that. So I just think that there's a little bit more added initiative for the kids saying, oh, now I'm gonna go to a jail instead of maybe being released back to a parent or, you know.
Well, Mr. Drew, what we're dealing with is, what, what was the, the cost to do a study is twenty, twenty-five thousand?
It's, uh, twenty-five thousand with Tegra and then plus the architect, plus the contractor. And the fees on that vary quite a bit because if we can get, you know, there's, there's, there's not that many builders and not that many architects that, that do these. So the goal is we can, and they, they want this work. We've talked to them about it. So they, they know about it.
What's the number then that we, the study is twenty-five thousand, but you, you wanna?
What's the other two pluses is what you say?
Us to commit to, basically, there, there's a, if we do it, you, you want us to sign off on all of this, but then we can pull out at any time we want, is that?
So, so what it works is, we go in and initially, you know, we gotta spend some time together so we really understand, you know, what the numbers are and, and what we're looking at internally. Uh, then, um, we go through and we do a request proposal for the architect and for the contractor. Go through interviews, go through it, you know, and go through the process. And then come back and say, this is what their first step is. Now, obviously, we push that first step to be as minimal as we can, knowing that they, if the project goes, they get paid, uh, you know, their full fee when it, when it goes through. And then it, from there, it goes through to find out, what do we actually need here? Because you know, this, it's, it's not just like coming in and taking order. What do you want? And this is what, we draw up what you want and this is what it costs. It's a give and take because, you know, uh, juvenile detention centers, they're no longer just, you know, warehousing kids. There's, there's a education piece to it and it's, and what do we do to keep these kids out of the system? And you can go a long ways with that. We, we just spent this morning with, uh, Paddington County and they're struggling with the same thing. Because, you know, they can end up with a couple of kids or they can end up with a half a dozen. And, and, you know, the staffing is the issue. How do you, how do you, how do you staff this without spending, um, a lot of money on, on staffing here because it isn't consistent? And so it's, it's a, it kinda gets to you back into it and say, okay, this is how much we can spend on this. Can we build, can we have bricks and mortar that are enough to house what the program is that you have to?
That's the range.
Oh, for the architect?
For the architect and the constructing guy that you were talking about. What's the range?
I mean, yeah, we.
How bad is it? How bad is it gonna be?
Yeah, I, yeah, I might say.
Eighty-five thousand?
Yeah, I'd say maybe twenty-five thousand for the architect and five for the contractor, something like that. It's some number like that. But having said that, I'm trying to look.
Fifty-five thousand dollars.
It's, it's something like that.
And with that, we will get a, a report on it and a design and, and all of that or?
Yeah, what, what you'll get is the numbers that say, okay, this is what it costs to build, what will meet the needs that he can staff. And so it comes back, you actually have the material, you need to make a decision.
Well, will it also do projections on, you know, because if we are doing a facility, we need a facility for ten years down the road. I mean, our, our needs now, is there any projections on where those are going? I, I'd hate to say it, but.
I don't think anybody can project how bad people are gonna become.
I would just say that, uh, you know, just like, uh, twenty years ago when they built the Kern County Jail.
Yeah.
They made it much bigger than what.
They thought, make it, make it over capacity.
And let's just say, um, twenty years from now, then we still have fifty years left on the lease. Then maybe it makes sense to build a separate juvenile detention center and you have an expanded jail that would still be able to house adults and then.
Yeah.
You know, you, you move the juveniles into a bigger facility, but.
Yep.
I think the way we're looking at it now is that this is, um, at one time, we maybe have four kids at one time, just for Yankton County. Um, so maybe the co-located looks or would be more applicable for our county to, or feasible for our county to sustain. Where you couldn't just build a separate location, say we're gonna have four kids there. Now, I know if we have a facility here, it will be utilized a lot more. And I think there'd be a lot more accountability for some of these kids. Um, as a sheriff, you know, you don't really wanna have to run a juvenile detention center. But when I see our county putting three hundred thousand dollars a year to another county, um, why not take a look at something that might set us up for the future, just like our predecessors did?
And, and I'm looking at it also as those, the, the kids, if, if you have a, a student at the high school that is unruly for some reason or another, rather than the.
I don't think you can put them into detention for being unruly.
Resource officer, having to haul that student, if he's, did something bad enough, having to haul him to Sioux Falls and then the next day bringing him back here to a judge or to a hearing and, and whatever, they can come here and they could sit in this facility for, for a day and a night and, and, and rather than sending them back into the household where they're gonna get either beat their mother or father, or they're gonna get beat or whatever because they dis, they disbehaved at school. I, I, I just think that if, if we can feasibly build this facility, it's gonna be something just like our predecessors did twenty years ago. It'll only be for, it'll be for juveniles versus adults.
You, you know, my question, the, the study, you know, why does the study of what we need have to be tied to a building? I mean, why, why couldn't we do the study and say, okay, well, this is your, your average daily individuals that you have and we expect that to increase, you know, five or ten percent? And then we, at least we would know that. Well, why can't that be separate from the building of it?
Well, I think, uh, before, before I took office.
Sure.
Um, it wasn't really a question for juvenile detention holds because it was so cheaper for us to.
Yeah.
I think it was like two hundred and some dollars a night. It has doubled since the last two years.
Well, yeah, Senate Bill seventy-three in, in twenty sixteen is really what dumped it onto the count. I mean, that hasn't even been ten years yet that, that that's happened. So, I mean, it's relatively, uh, uh, one of our newer unfunded mandates, I guess, to say.
Well, I think, uh, you know, with the JDAI program with the state's attorney's office, like in the study, I believe that that should be included in there because if Alec didn't take some of these juveniles uh, on the JDAI program, they probably should have been up in Sioux Falls.
There would be more.
So I think that should also be probably included in the study as well. I mean, that's if, it's something that you guys wanna consider, but. It's something you guys want to consider, but.
It also doesn't help when the juveniles get together in the, I'll call it the reception area outside the courtrooms. And just laugh and talk and have a good time. Because they're not very serious about it, because. Judge puts you on probation for six months and. And nothing happens.
And, uh, you know, I I was a school resource officer for about four years at the at the school district and. Um, that's one of the toughest jobs an officer can take on because you're dealing with juveniles. Uh, sometimes you have the parents, you have really good parents and you have some really bad parents. And, um. When that SRO has to take a juvenile away from the school and go back to the station. There's times where the SRO or another officer for the city has to sit with these juveniles until we arrange. Transportation for them to go to Sioux Falls. So then, not only that, and I know it's the city, but you're taking an officer for the off the street from the city. To essentially babysit a juvenile when they could drop off. At a, you know, the co-located area and then they can go back to work. So, I mean, there's a lot of added benefits to the city as well on this and we've had discussions, um, regarding that and I think.
The city want to partner with us, huh?
Well, I think that the, yeah, you know, I think that there's just, uh, regardless to. If a juvenile causes something in Lesterville, we're still gonna get stuck with it.
Yeah.
So I think we just go in the.
Do do we have, do we have the the number of people that were in? Juvenile detention like throughout the year and get, you know, our average daily number, do we? Do we know what that that should be something that we could find out? It's like, we spent this much. We had this many people even there and they were re- repeat offenders, divide that out, okay? This is the number of our average daily people, this is how much we spend. Uh, per day, per week, per month, and just know that number, realizing that that number might go higher. But I mean, that's our starting point. I mean, because if we're, if our average is. You know, just a couple, well, does it make sense if our average is eight? Well, then it's probably a really good idea.
Well, I think our average students per day in Sioux Falls is probably around two.
Yeah, and I will say that when I, when I completed the budget, I anticipated if I if I was to house two juveniles. For the whole year and just a little sliver extra, that got me to three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars a year.
Just for two.
Just for two and just, um. A little bit of extra.
I mean, we'd be cheaper to pay each kid a hundred thousand dollars a year to behave. Um, yeah, that's that's crazy, yeah, so. Wow.
But I, you know, I want these guys to come back and, um, just if you had any questions, there's nothing to vote on. It's just a discussion, I think it's good for the the public and. Uh, for transparency for people to understand, um, just the issue that we're bringing up, like I said. When I took over, you know, um, the previous sheriff didn't have. The cost like we are now, and that's just because Minnehaha County is thinking for the future and they.
Yeah.
They're driving the price up.
I I think it really is.
There were better children back then.
What's a new phenomenon, because the state, you know, used to pay for for all of this and we had the state centers that. You know, you had one solution for the state and now we went from one solution to sixty-six different solutions. To the same problem.
The other thing too is that, you know, um, a co-located area would be good for. You know, the mental health too, because some of these kids do suffer from mental illness, so. Um, it's a safe place for, uh, Lewis and Clark Behavioral or Heartland or whoever. Comes in and may see those, um, juveniles, um, from time to time, but. I think there's a lot of added things or a lot of pieces that would benefit. Um, but that's what the study would show is that if it makes sense, it makes sense. If not. We'll just keep sending them to Sioux Falls for five hundred dollars a night, four hundred ninety-five dollars, right?
Ninety.
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-eight.
Forty-eight.
Yeah, four ninety-eight.
When's that going up to?
It's already gone up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, actually, I gotta sign the agreement, I think, tonight. Yeah.
You should have made a sign the agreement, Harrison.
Yeah, so, which so here, so here's what, here's what I would like to say is. Is I think that we need to, as a commission. Think about this and at our next meeting, I think it's a decision that we need to make to either go ahead and do the study. And move forward with the feasibility study of the project. Or we need to say, hey, fifty-five, we don't want to spend fifty-five thousand dollars to find out if a juvenile detention center. Is feasible in Yankton County and just tell the public that we're not moving forward with it. But it's time that I think we need to either blank or get off the bottom.
So, um, I know what the EMS, you guys had a feasibility study done with that. Um, from my understanding, Tegra would be here on site, because the last time they had a feasibility study. Um, that company didn't step foot in the county. And so that's where I think, you know, you guys.
You mean the ambulance? Guy.
Yeah, we've we've got scheduled, right now we're looking at at scheduling, uh, six meetings. And, um. And most of those are in in person. And, uh, what we're trying to do is just, how do we get to the dollar, how do we get to what, at the end, the end of the day, what does it cost to build this thing, what does it cost to operate it? And how do we get something concrete that you can actually go to the bank on and say, this is what it is? Because if you're taking out a bond and you're doing this, I mean, that number, that that's that's what it's gonna be. Even though the facility isn't designed, but it's it's got to be, you know, a conceptual design that's tested on pricing, it's got to work from the staffing side of it. It's got to all work before you move forward on it, and that's what the goal of this would be.
And 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 that's why I say in our next meeting, February fourth, the hopefully all five of us will be here. And we can make a decision at that point in time. I don't, I don't think we can vote on it, on a situation like this tonight with the three of us here.
That's, yeah, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
I just had it as a discussion, there was no voting on it tonight, just because we wanted some public comment or input on it. Um, and people to think about it, you guys have enough time to look at the packets and read through that stuff to see what the.
And and I think for Tegras, uh, to be fair to them, we need to make a decision here, like I said. Very soon to say, hey, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with it, or. Thank you for your time and we appreciate that and we'll support you anytime we can, but. We're not gonna move forward, but I think February fourth meeting, we should, we should make a decision.
Don't we have to? Sign that contract with Minnehaha County for twenty-twenty-five because. Where, because there's no way it's gonna be built in the next month.
That's correct, that's correct, so.
We're approving that tonight.
Sure. Uh, the the last thing I'd say is, you know, I agree with all that, I just, I would like just the the hard data on. This is the number of kids, this is the average daily stay, this is the amount we spent and just so we can, so I can see that. Because, you know, at the end of the day, we're gonna have to justify it, and the more information we get, the better information that we can tell the constituents. So that's the info I'd like before.
And and Alec Martin.
Yep.
Um, has all that information.
And and if, you know, the, and we we have invested in a lot with juvenile detention, you know, with Alec and and I personally, I guess I'd like to see. That those numbers are going down, I mean, because we. You you know, we we hired, you know, additional staff working with the Boys and Girls Club, it would be nice to know. That that's working and having the data proving that that is working. Because, you know, like, we're we're all conservatives here, but, you know, sometimes the answer isn't more government too.
Yes, that's what I'm just saying, that's.
And I do want to say, I I did check into, because I know some people said that. There's a possibility that we're able to add on to the the jail, uh, going up.
Going up?
Uh, that is not the truth, uh, maybe at one point or another, since I've talked to Waffle Construction on this. That maybe that was an original plan, um, but as time goes on, people make cuts in buildings and they try to figure out ways to save money. And so that was not, uh, something, so you cannot add on another tier to the to the county jail, so. I want to make that clear because I had Waffle Construction come in and we.
Yep. And and just reiterate that this facility, it's gonna be a dual purpose, it would be. Primarily for juveniles, but if for some reason it needed to be converted and i- it would still be used for that other purpose, right?
Yeah.
That's what, okay.
And that's the plan is is for the lower level for juveniles, the upper level for adults.
I think that gives us modular and options, which I think is a good.
A three level then, we're planning?
Two.
Juveniles on the bottom and two levels or just one level of adults?
Uh, just the juveniles in the bottom and then, um, the adults on top, expanding a pod.
I get that.
It'd be currently as well.
Two levels.
Jail, two levels total, yeah.
Okay.
Basement?
No basement.
Okay.
Alright.
You're too quiet.
No, uh, we have to approve for the.
Alright, thank you very much, yeah.
Thanks, guys. I guess I, it's an agreement that we have here. Um. I guess we don't have much of a choice but to approve it, so. Move approval.
And a motion by Dan, second by Wanda.
Can you tell them what the cost for the, so the public knows what, because I think Arise is a different.
New cost, the old cost was four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, the new improved cost is four hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents.
Yeah, and I just went up from one year. Yep. Yeah, Arise, and Arise does take juveniles. But it's like more of a, a low level, they don't have staff, that's where we had a juvenile walk away. Is another concern of mine, so that's why I think.
That's the Lutheran Lutheran social service.
This is for the Lutheran that we're doing tonight.
There should be two of them. I think they're included on the same.
Yeah, yeah, the the Lutheran one is first and then the juvenile detention one is.
Yep.
You know, does the, um, for for John.
Lutheran Social Services is is on here.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gattering.
Yes, I I I see nothing in our culture that indicates that our kids are gonna be. Uh, more improved, uh, have less problems, less challenges than they did in the past. And I think, uh, when we look at the discussion, I I'd like to have. An estimate of number of hours that, uh, we have involved. In transportation of that, uh, the the kid from. Yankton to to Sioux Falls and back and forth for court cases and et cetera. Because that could, that could be. Maybe even a third or a fourth of what what the daily rate is.
Don't.
Yes, be asked, we looked at also, so that that's all I had to say, thank you.
Wear and tear.
Doesn't judge.
Thanks, Don.
Still do ITV for juveniles? So they aren't transported back every time there's a court hearing?
No, I believe we have to go pick them up. It depends on the case.
Well, depends on how serious it is, I assume.
Yeah, but most times, the the judge does want to see him or. Him or her.
Is is there?
Yeah, I think they're both included, there's just, there's two different prices listed on there.
Lutheran Social Services, two ninety-six fourteen.
Have two motions.
Nope, it's it's the same agreement, it's under Minnehaha County's juvenile.
I'll I'll make a motion to approve the agreements. For, uh, Lutheran Social Services, two hundred ninety-six dollars, fourteen cents a day and. Uh, JDC, four hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents a day.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Wanda.
Sure, okay. Not excited about it, but.
Further discussion, hearing done. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries.
A new record for you.
Yeah. Okay, let's discuss our State of South Dakota budget cuts discussion.
That'll be fun.
Did you want me to?
I think Dan should lead the charge.
Lead the charge.
Uh, you know, just so we're all aware, a lot of cuts coming down, uh, e- even heard some new ones, uh. Tyler, uh, mentioned on on some kits, uh, we had, uh, VSOs, possibility of. Medicare, Medicaid, or whatever, which one it is, you know, those cuts could, you know, really hurt. Especially our ambulance, who's finally making some headway, a lot of hard work, um, getting a lot of our frequent. Customers insured, and unfortunately, that could go away, um. I know last time we start, uh, talked specifically about veteran service officer, um. And I think we're in agreeance, we need to prioritize Yankton County, uh. Veterans first and help others. I I talked to, uh, Mr. Stickney. Today and he was in the office, uh, late because he's getting so overwhelmed and I. We need to be careful about burning him out and then us not having anybody to replace him. So I would propose, and I I don't even think we would need a motion, but to, um. Prioritize, um, Yankton County veterans first and veterans from. Other areas, uh, by appointment only and subject to Mr. Stickney can work that into a schedule. And I'd also put a big sign out there saying. Due to the state's proposed vet- veteran cuts, we had to do that and, uh. I don't, do you think we need a motion to do something like that? Um, really, really put it? Well, I mean, but I mean, that's the kind of the direction we we said we were gonna go.
You can do a resolution setting forth your.
Plan?
Plan.
Okay.
I, and and I, and I'm good, I'm I'm I'm, I understand and and wholeheartedly agree. I I would like to see where where we were doing, or we did a resolution to say that. That we will only take Yankton County residents or. Will will not make.
How about prioritize?
Yeah.
Prioritize Yankton County residents, but I would like to see Rob. Uh, designate maybe Thursday afternoon for out of Yankton County by appointment only.
Yeah, the the only issue I would see with that is, you you know, Thursday.
He's, but if nobody, but if nobody from out of the county, but if from nobody. Out of the county calls and makes an appointment, he's got Thursday afternoon off.
I I'm I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
Friday then.
Well, I.
Yeah.
Uh, just, just whatever he feels comfortable with is what I'm saying, I'm not.
I I would be, I would be fine with that, maybe we just leave that up to him to decide, um, because he's a go-getter and he'll, um. Um. Well, yes, I think we we need to just say, hey, that's our precedent and I'm disappointed with the surrounding counties and the state. Um, that they don't want to work with us and and even the budget dresses, all you veterans stand up, thank you for your service. Now they're gonna cut your benefits.
But 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 here's the thing that, uh, first of all, the the cuts have not been decided yet. Um, so I don't know where that's gonna be, but but at the same token, Rob is, whether the cuts happen or not, Rob is still getting overworked.
Yeah.
So I think we need to, we need to either make a decision to to put a schedule together for him. Or we need to figure out a way to to hire him, an assistant for him. And I know that's not in the budget, so.
Well, and the the office is not big enough because they're working on confidential information.
Right, right, so so what I'm saying is, is I think we need to specify a time. That he has for outside of Yankton County residents.
Mm-hmm.
Does he have voicemail?
I believe so.
I'm sure he does.
They could add that to his voicemail too, that you're, yeah, out of county.
And I I think we need to get a sign, a sign put up too that that, you know, it's.
I don't think we, I don't think we could put a sign up yet because because, well, I mean, we can, we can, if if we're gonna do the resolution. We have to do that first.
Do we need a resolute, or can we just say this is of the direction we want to go, Tyler? I mean. I mean, we're not really making a decision. I, he he's, he's gonna have guidance to run his department kind of how he sees fit.
And I think he should, he should work with Tyler and do a resolution so that everyone in the county knows. That this is what we're doing as a county commission and the state understands that this is what we've. Done. I I don't.
One, definitely disappointed in this, the state. That they would put us in this position and it's, as a veteran, I'm pretty upset that that the state would can consider that and. They're real proud to say we've, we've sent, uh. We've, we've done eight deployments to the Mexican border, but when you get back, don't look to the state to help, go to your counties.
Yep. So it's just to go, uh, hand in hand with that, um, I had to sign up to be a certifying official. For some of our veteran officers that work for the sheriff's office. For them to reclaim their GI bill. And Dan knows this, I have been on the phone, um. Getting my certifications, trying to get people added to it, it is not a short process, and I'll tell you right now. But I spent probably way too much more time, but I wanted to make sure that the the benefits were given to the employee. And so now, uh, approximately about eleven months. And so now, uh, approximately about 11 months later, I got it all signed up, but that's just one employee that I was trying to do that for. I couldn't imagine doing it for multiple, multiple people, so just wanted to say that it is not as easy as you think.
You know, and, and, and in my, in my mind, I think rather than, than our governor even thinking about making cuts to our VSO officers, I think they should double or triple the reimbursement to the counties so that maybe we could have someone assist Rob, but.
Exactly, and, yeah, I mean, that's exactly right and, y- you know.
But I think, I think also our, our governor made that statement and our legislators have stated that, that they're 100% supportive of, of the VSO, uh, function, so I don't, I don't see that cut being, being passed.
I mean, veterans.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it matters because I think they were voted in because of, because of their support of the veterans.
I think there's very few veterans in the legislature, very, very, very few. Oh, yeah, I mean, and just, just for this.
Yes, yes, Don.
Suggest that, uh, we, we put a 60-day delay on this so we know what the state's gonna do, actually gonna do. I, I hate to be in a position where, uh, up front, uh, we're, uh, blasting this thing out of the water when the, it, you know, the state has to, did their budget balance too. Any, and, and so I, I'd say that's, that's wait two months and then if there's an option, uh, we, we need to go to the other counties and say, this is what's, this is what it's gonna cost, uh, on an annual basis to do your, your veterans.
I think we need to make the resolu-, I think we need to make the resolution so that some of the weight gets lifted off the veteran service officer.
Yeah, I, I.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that we can't do, go to the other counties in 60 days when we find out what the govern-, the governor or the legislature is gonna do, but I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think he's being uninvited with.
Exactly.
People.
I, I think we should make a resolution and get with Rob and say, we're, we're gonna take Yankton County citizen veterans to start first, and I do think though that we should have, uh, half a day, whatever day he decides, set aside for non-residents of Yankton County, and I think that if, if, if nobody ma-, by appointment only, so if nobody calls from Bonhomme County, nobody calls that afternoon, that frees him up.
To do whatever.
To do whatever he wants to do.
Well, and he has, I mean, somebody coming in.
The, the, my only concern, uh, 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 not my only concern, a concern that I have is that if, if all of a sudden we say, yeah, you can come on Thursday afternoon, uh, this month, but for the next nine months, you, you, you don't get a chance to come in because there's so many other people. It, it, I think it would be way more difficult and way more discouraging for the veteran uh, to have to, uh, not know whether he's gonna be served or not.
Well, that's why you make, that's why you make appointments.
One day, if you make an appointment for nine months from now, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference when you're suffering.
Yep. It's, it's a tough decision.
They need to be served, they need to be served.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, do you, John, or Mr. Joe, you want to get with Rob and get something figured out?
Yeah, I'll talk to Rob.
Present it then, and, uh, because I've, I've talked to him and I agree with everything that's been said and I'm upset the state has put us in this position.
What other budget cuts are there, um, on the horizon?
Do we want to know anymore? That's, that's a lot, I, I think that's what I, I'll, I'll know more, but, uh, you know, we can expect, uh, I, I don't know, Patty, how many election bills are out there now? A dozen, two dozen? I mean, a lo-, a lot, a lot of bills, um, and, uh, we'll know more coming up, but, um, quite a few of them, so.
Okay. Enough discussion on the, uh, budget cuts.
I move to approve the January 7, 2025 meeting minutes.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Dan. Uh, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries.
I moved to, I moved to approve the claims.
Got a motion by Wanda to approve the claims, second by Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries.
I move to approve the December 2024 Auditor Treasurer's Report in pooled cash.
Second.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the December 2024 Auditor Treasurer Report pooled cash. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries.
I move to approve the second and third of 2020, second and third quarter MI quarterly reports from the year 2024.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by.
Second.
Dan. Uh, to move the second and third quarter 2024 MI quarterly reports, any further discussion?
Question on that, maybe this is a, uh, discussion for executive session, are there, I guess, individuals that are released early from those types of things that, I'll just ask it in executive session, but, uh, just had a, a concern if we're, if there, are they releasing people too, too soon out of HSE? Were you?
They, they can keep them up to five days, but they usually keep them one to two.
But I, I mean, is five days long enough to get somebody stable up?
That's what the statute says. Go to peer and change it.
There's, there's times where we bring them up that night and then we have to come back and go pick them up the next, the next day.
They don't meet the criteria.
Yeah.
Is, is that that there?
I'm sorry?
Is it that they don't meet?
You have to suffer from a psychological disorder that impairs your thought, mood, perception, orientation, or memory, which significantly impairs your ability to cope with the basic demands of life and danger to yourself, or danger to other people, or suffer from an inability to care for yourself. So if you're aged and can't care for yourself, um, you can be taken out, somebody can file a petition. A qualified mental health, uh, qualified mental health professional doesn't interview with you. They make the determination whether or not you meet the criteria, if you meet the criteria, then the sheriff's office takes them out to the, um, Human Services Center where another professional decides whether they're keepers or not, but you can be totally insane, but not a danger to yourself or others and not have an inability to care for yourself, and you can't be locked up. And I can think of somebody off the top of my head that fits that criteria. On the other hand, you can be not crazy, but threatening to kill people, and you can't be taken out there either.
Prime, prime example would be somebody's intoxicated, they make a threat to somebody else or their, or themselves or somebody else. After, that's why there's a 24-hour mental health hold once they sober up, then we go pick them up.
Just, to me, I mean, are we, are we more concerned about getting somebody in and getting them out as soon as possible? Or actually treating?
It's not up to us, it's up to a psychiatrist.
Got a motion and a second, any? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carries. Public comment, now's the time for public comment, uh, anyone have anything to say? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Commissioners updates, Wanda, you got anything to update?
No, I'm still struggling with making children better.
There you go. Dan?
Yeah, I, um, last week I got back from DC, I had a pretty good trip out there, I met with, uh, um, a bunch of the executives from, uh, NACO, uh, from around the country, so they were eye-opening that, you know, we get so, such little support from, uh, the state, um, I got to talk about how we're one of the only states where, you know, really criminal justice is 100% on, on the counties and people ask, well, how are you able to do that? We said, well, not, it's tough and not well. Um, it was, uh, you, uh, I got to meet with, uh, Senator Thune's staff and I brought up our stone church bridge and how that's been in limbo for years now for the, uh, environmental study and I, I made sure I said that it's gonna take longer to study the environment on that bridge than build it, and they promised they'll look after it. Uh, also brought up some veteran issues, um, that we're dealing with and something that was common through many states is the FEMA floodplain map that we were forced to adopt, and by, we are not the only ones, uh, with that, I, I know Wisconsin State is dealing with our same things that, uh, we weren't even provided a map of the, the FEMA floodplain maps prior to us being forced to approve it. So, uh, looking at doing that and, and then I got to kind of meet, and a personal note, I, I went over and got to see, uh, former President Carter Lyon State and it was a very, uh, very humbling experience and a good, uh, uh, good thing to see it, uh, nation did a good honor to him, so, uh, that's pretty much all I have, so.
Okay.
Motion to go into executive session for poor relief and personnel issues.
A motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to go into executive session.
Aye. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Aye.
Go back into regular session.
Go back into regular session?
Second.
My damn second by wonder. My favorite I.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, this is Paul May. Here it is.
All right, I would move to pay C W burial twenty three oh four oh one in the amount of four hundred and twenty six dollars. You want to do these separately?
Let's do them all together or what do you what do we need to do separately or altogether? Uh, second.
There's a different number.
Oh, I'll second that.
I don't think you should second it.
Oh, I'm withdraw.
Tyler. While the state's attorney is checking that. Yep, both of them are both of them are the same like wrong. Okay, I would move to pay county welfare burial twenty five dash oh one. Okay, I would move to pay County Welfare Burial 25-01-001 in the amount of $1,650.
Second. All right.
And I think maybe we'll want to pen the other two for another session because they don't make sense.
All right, I'll second the motion to pen the other two.
Want me to give the numbers to pen? I would move to pen County Welfare 23-04-001 and County Welfare CW burial 24-2-001 until the next meeting.
Second.
I.
Okay, we'll wait.
Suppose May.
Got to. We got to get this flag. Is that enough?
Move to adjourn.
Should do adjourned? Said no.
I will talk slow. Mr. Larson? I would move to adjourn second.
Hi.